Playmark City Council Work Session, we have three items on the agenda this evening, beginning with residential contractor erosion control licensing.
Thank you, sir, and I will call on Mr. Crass to present this topic.
Thank you, Mr. Fairborn, Mr. Mayor, and the council. What we're going to present tonight is something we have been, it's been kind of ongoing since 2012, and it's part of our updated stormwater management plan to develop a program for residential contractor training and certification. So, first thing I'm going to go through is a PowerPoint for a training session that we held in 2012 with the, with the single-family home builders, basically outlining what our expectations were with regards to erosion control for single-family home sites. My staff decided to call this "The Good, The Bad, and The Ugly," and as we move along, I think you'll see why. What good practice is, is erosion control devices are on the downstream side of the house, we require that curb inlet protection be installed downstream, and the devices that are installed need to be maintained on a regular basis and inspected on a regular basis. So, this is a single-family home site where in the lower corner you can see the curb inlet protection. There is some evidence of some bulging of the silt fence. Oops. Lori, could you hit the present, please? Up, up to the right, to the right? Thanks. So, you've got some, the inlet erosion control protection, and there is some bulging in the silt fence, so that's indicative of a little bit of sediment accumulation that would need to be cleaned out. Here's another example of the, of a good installation. You can see the stockpile is set away from the erosion control. Now, the bad is, there is some erosion-controlled devices, but they are not being maintained in a regular, regular manner, or it's completely missing here. You can see that the erosion control is completely missing, you can see sediment is being transported out into the curb line, which ultimately gets into the storm sewer. Here you have, although the silt fence was installed, the stockpile has been piled on top of it, so, and it is down and no longer functioning. Then we get to the ugly, where contractors just install it and let it go, they, for long periods of time, the stockpiles on the street, mud, mud tracked out onto the street, silt fence is down and overloaded and no longer functioning. And this is one we run into quite a bit. The silt fence actually has a tail on it that needs to be excavated and buried into the ground, and a lot of times, the silt fence, they'll just place it and leave it, leave it flush, and, you know, I've been doing this for 15 years and still don't understand why the contractors say, but then the water won't go underneath it, so it's... So, the intent was to get the builders to step up their erosion control measures, the maintenance of the erosion control measures, and the inspection of them. We also outlined what our enforcement inspection measures would be, and let them, you know, let them know, okay. You know, that there, it's a problem with state and federal regulations, we would result in a stop-work order, city remedying the deficiencies in billing the contractors. You know, council recently awarded an on-call construction, or, excuse me, sediment erosion control contract, and if it gets, to be continued egregious, we would then cite them through our code enforcement process. We've held this, as I said, we held this builder in training in 2012. We have stepped up somewhat our erosion control inspections. Over the past two years, we have averaged 200 notices of violation for, that's 200 a year for 40 homes, we consider that to be a little unacceptable, and so we are proposing to step, step this up to the next, to the next level. What we have developed, and I will hand this out, because we did, we talked about this a little while ago during our stormwater plan presentation, is, this is a, what I'll go through here, sir, are, what you have, are slides that Lori's going to run us through here, as I kind of describe what's going on. It is an online training module that we've, that we've developed internally, and at the end, there's actually a quiz that the builders can take, and then they would be issued a, issued a certificate for, for the training. They're, they can access it online, they'll be able to do it at their, at their leisure, but we do have some time constraints that I'll be outlining later. So, Lori, if you want to, this is, what we will, what we would propose to do is send a letter to the builders explaining the new process, and what we would provide is a link to this site, so then they would simply log on with their, we'll give them some log-on information. And then this, they would basically run through the, run through the test, or through the training, thank you. So, basically, the first, the first module provides them with, with background on why we're doing and what we're doing. So, as you see, as of June 2012, we will be increasing our, or 2015, I'm sorry, oh, no, that's when we originally started, that we started in 2012. Next slide, please, Lori. And as I stated, we have issued over 200 notices or citations a year, and we do consider that to be, to be unacceptable. So, we will be requiring, what we've required to date is that the builders show on their plot plans the proposed erosion control measures, and we had allowed them to have it, have it up at the time of the first building inspection, but there's quite a bit of work that occurs before the first, first building inspection, so now we will be mandating that the erosion control measures be installed prior to us issuing a building permit, so what, it will happen is during our, the engineering department's review of the plot plans, our inspector will go out and review the site to make sure that the erosion control measures are in place and have been properly, properly installed. This is an example of information that the builders have been, have been given with the building permits. This is a diagram from the American Public Works Association, single-family home erosion control measures showing, or manual that shows what good erosion control measures are. We are going to be developing our own handout with some additional information that we will be providing them. There are also some special conditions that the builders need to take into account when they're planning their erosion control plans, you know, if they're adjacent to a stream or other sensitive areas, additional measures may be, may be necessary. And then, the next segment, so that's their planning and initial installation, the next one is installation and maintenance requirements. And the big one, the big message we want to get across to them is that these measures need to be inspected weekly and after each, each significant rainfall event. Anything, you know, the easiest way to, to get to explain that with a significant rainfall event is if it's muddied up at the site enough that they're tracking and putting ruts in the site, the erosion control needs to be inspected. In addition, we will, we will be doing spot checks and making sure that the measures are installed and maintained. We're also providing information here on the proper installation of the silt fences. I explained earlier, it has the tag that needs to be buried, simply laying the tag on the ground and then piling dirt on top of it is not, is not sufficient. This is a picture for them of a really good example of a proper driveway, driveway entrance and stockpile locations where it's back away from the silt fence, so it's not going to, if it does get rained on and starts running sloughing, it's not going to overload the silt fence. And then we go into what you should be looking for if, when you go out on your inspection. Gaps and tears in the silt fence need to be repaired immediately, anything that is down and, and not attached to the, to the stakes needs to be repaired. If there's a, a spot where there's a lot of strain, where there's a lot of sediment loading the silt fence, they may need to install additional measures to take some of the load off of the, off of the silt fence. And looking for sediment accumulation, as we said, when the sediment reaches about a third to a quarter the height of the silt fence, it needs to be, it needs to be removed. And it needs to remain in place until turf is established, and we consider it the, about 90% of the turf established prior to them removing, removing the silt fence. So, that will typically be after they sod the, sod the lots. Also, here's a couple of measures of inlet, inlet protection, either a straw waddle or just a containment around a field inlet. Another area of concern is the, is the concrete, is the concrete washout. They need to provide, either the developer needs to provide a designated spot for the concrete washout for the trucks, or it needs to be done on-site, and there are a number of on-site containment, containment items that the builders can use to provide, provide a washout area for the, for the concrete. They also need to, they will also need to designate that on their, on their plot plans. And we're providing them details of a stabilized, stabilized construction entrance, you know, geotextile under the rock is, is optional, but they do need to keep this in a, in a good, good, or good repair and stable. And just some other things that they need to be aware of that are pollutants and considered illicit discharges. A lot of the builders put portable toilets on the site, they need to be placed away from the inlets, the trash and debris needs to be contained, and wastewater from paint and drywall cannot be washed into the curb or the curb inlets. And then we also wanted to inform them about the enforcement measures we're going to be taking. Again, they, again, we want to stress that they need to do self-inspections, and that damaged silt fence needs to be repaired as soon as possible, mud or rock tracked onto the street needs to be cleaned up immediately, and that, again, that we will be doing spot inspections, although we, we expect them to be doing the inspections on a regular basis, it's not our intent to become their superintendent. And right now, we are establishing a, depending, if there's, if rain is imminent, we may, we may shorten this, but we are proposing a 48 hours to make needed repairs after we know, we notify them. But if we're looking at the weather, and we know that there are some gully washers coming like this weekend, we will, we will shorten that, that timeframe. If the repairs are not completed within 48 hours, we will, we will contact the, our on-call contractor to make the repairs, and we will bill the, bill the builder for the repairs, basically, what we, what we will do is deduct that, they put up a $500 cash mud deposit, so we will deduct that from their mud deposit. We step up after a second violation, we will issue a stop-work order, we will complete the repairs, and either they, and if they, or if they complete the repairs, we will, we will charge a reinspection fee to come out to the site once they are, once they are remedied, remedied. In the event of a third violation, we will take it to the, to the next, next step, we will issue a stop-work order, again, if necessary, we will complete the repairs at their expense, we will levy the $50 reinspection fee, and we will issue a citation. So, at the conclusion of this, there is a test, so, we could, we could do it as a group, where Lori can give you the answers, however, but at the end, you get a certificate. So, it's all, it's all pretty, pretty simple, it's, everything is not required, everything is required there except the restroom. Trying to get a...
I'd be very careful here, I had a couple of problems with this. You may not want to speak out loud, just kind of...
Okay. Concrete, concrete washout is a designated area only, silt fence can be weighted down. All of the above. Alls. Drew. Hey. All of the above. No. Alls. What's, passing rate is 70%, and, and they will then get a certificate of, certificate What we would propose to do is send a letter to the residential contractors explaining the new process and giving them a three-month timeframe to complete the training, the online training and pass the test. We would provide a letter to them with an individual link to the testing site with instructions, we'll also include a brochure with our, with additional information, and regardless, it is our intention that engineering Lori and her stormwater intern will be taking over single-family erosion control inspections starting June, June 1st. Now, there are, our intent would be that this certificate follow along with the, and I'm going to go, I'm going to the next, I'm sorry, are there any questions with this?
What if the instructor decides not to do the training?
That leads right into my next item, so...
Okay. Kevin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You said that $500 to bond is required at the beginning of a project. What do we expect the cost of a, of our contractor to go out and remedy an issue that's been failed to be remedied by the developer? That's my first question of it.
What is... Speed out of it.
No, no, I, I think you'll get where I'm, where I'm going with this, is that, I agree with staff that that many violations over that many houses is unacceptable, and that, that indicates that there's multiple incidences with certain builders. What my concern is, is that if there's only a $500 bond, what do we do when that bond is depleted?
We always, the final, the final ticket we have is the certificate of occupancy. So, if the builder has any outstanding, outstanding bills with the city, those would need to be paid before we would issue a certificate of occupancy, or do the final, the final inspection. So, all the way through the process, we've got, we've got a carrot and a stick.
Will we issue a certificate of occupancy without the sod being down? I know they did when we built my house.
They do, they do over the winter, I believe they do, but they do take financial, I believe they take financial security to assure that the sod is, is placed in a timely manner.
Yeah, that, my question then, does the restrictions and the penalties then transfer to the homeowner, the people that are living there versus the builder?
It does, it does not.
Okay, so the builder's still the person we're going to go after?
Yes. Okay, thanks. Yes, because that would be a, that, what we issue is a temporary certificate of occupancy, and so until, they would be responsible until a final certificate of occupancy is issued.
Kevin?
Thank you, and Mr. Holman, just segued into the next question. What we're talking about is developers and builders. In the case that they have completed the, the project, given the occupancy permit, the house is being lived in, and now we've got a, a problem after that, does this cover after the developers all said and done and completed?
If we're looking at issues, well, the, the erosion control ordinance does not cover homeowners unless they're disturbing over 2,500 square feet, and that's quite a bit of, what it does, what it would fall under is the, either the property maintenance code or the nuisance code.
Is this a one-time only, once you're certified, you're certified, or would you have to be recertified every year or every two years?
It would be, it would be annually.
Annually, okay. Thank you. Any other questions, Sonja?
I just have, I have a couple of questions. First, I was curious, how many of the 200 offenses are repeat offenders? Are we, do we have people that over and over and over are getting cited for this? And secondly, like, if we have a week where it's raining every day, is 48 hours really a reasonable amount of time for someone to get out and wade through the mud and fix the fence?
Well, the intent is that they are policing it on a weekly basis, so it should be up and operable at all times. So, that's, I mean, that, so if it's in disrepair, it's been in disrepair for quite a while. So, they, yes, 48 hours is a reasonable timeframe. We don't track it that way, we get the, we get the information from buildings, building inspections, so we don't, they have it by address, but we have never broken it down by, by builder.
But anecdotally, we know there are repeat offenders, some of those pictures were from the same builder.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, I can't imagine anybody moving into a house where they still had this and they didn't have their grass or sod down and all. So, my first question that came to my mind was, is it difficult to get rid of the debris, and is there a place where they, they know that they can always get it removed? Because I can't see why anybody would want to leave it here. So, obviously, are there a few places available for, that will take this kind of debris? Is that a problem?
Well, typically, all the debris is cleaned up at, when the builder does their final inspection, prior to someone moving in. What you run in, what you run into is, when you get into the winter where they're not able to cut sod or lay sod, you do end up with, with a yard that, that is dirt until, till the spring when they can lay the sod.
But the builder would still come back and fix all that?
Yes.
It's not the response, the person, the homeowner's responsibility to take care of that?
No.
Do you ever run into anybody who's building their own homes that wants to plant grass? Is that something that they're allowed to do versus sod?
Yes, thank you, I'm not looking at you because I'm not familiar with that.
I know if, you've outlined pretty good in your, your plan, if we go out there and we just happen to catch John Smith dumping paint down the drain, he's in trouble with us and we have the process outlined. I'm just curious, I know the onus is on us with EPA and DNR to take action and follow our plan and so forth, and he would suffer potential criminal penalties under this process. Is his name reported at the EPA, do they take any action against the individual, or are they, is it just a, is it all on us?
It's all on us.
That's what I think, thank you.
Any final questions?
Okay, to answer your question, Mayor, I'd like to move on to the, the second item, which is the, the proposed code amendment. What we are requesting is we would like to make this part of the contractor, contractor licensing, so you asked the question, what happens if they don't, don't get the certificate? What we are proposing...
This would be page 413 in your packets.
What we are proposing is a modification to section 605, 025, contractor licensing, and as Mr. Fairborn noted, it's on, it is the red text that is on page, page four that we would be proposing to add to the, to the contractor licensing.
And the, the way we see this working is, in this first year, as Mr. Crass indicated, they would have three months to complete, once, we, we estimate, once the council would approve this, this change to the code, they would have three months to take the test, get the certificate, and present the certificate to the city clerk's office, otherwise, permits would not be issued if they came in to inspections to get a permit issued. Following that, it would be a requirement that they then renew the certificate by taking the test again, it would allow us to update with any modifications we wanted to the test in any given year, based on what we're seeing out there, and then, before they would be issued an occupational license in future years, they would have to present the certificate along with the other requirements you see here to the city clerk when they came in to get their license. Thank you, Mr., somebody's got to shut the mic off. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Question here is, are there any other municipalities that are doing the same thing that we are talking about instituting in here tonight? And if so, would we, if another municipality is requiring a licensing and, and doing the testing similar to this, would we accept that, like in a reciprocity manner, to where we would recognize that licensing from another municipality, so that way the contractor wouldn't have to do it twice?
I am not aware of any municipalities in Missouri that are, that are doing this. Johnson County, Kansas does have a requirement, but we looked at, we looked at what they are using for the tests, and it's more of a general erosion control test, and it's more geared towards site developers rather than single-family, single-family home sites, and so we felt that this would be, and since we are making it available online and at no cost, the other ones do have a cost involved, we felt it would be better to go this route where it's specifically targeted to the single-family home sites.
We also felt that, as, as you could tell here, I mean, we were done walking through the instructional portion and taking the test, they could do it in about 15 minutes. This isn't like getting a Class A, B, C, or D certification where you're going to classes in the evenings, you're literally going online and spending 15 minutes of your time... in the evenings, you're literally going online and spending 15 minutes of your time. That is more, the instruction in the test is more, hey, we're gonna remind you what you're supposed to be doing here, what our expectations are, and we want you to know that now there are increased enforcement measures that are gonna be associated with this. We're watching it because clearly giving you, because all of the contractors saw the first part of this presentation, the good, the bad, and the ugly. We, we are not getting voluntary compliance. So the point of this is, we wanna bring it home a little bit more, uh, impactfully.
Mr. Fearborn, the proposed change on section 605, the red section is more preambulatory language, just identifying the, the license itself and the requirement for the certificate. Do you think there could be some confusion, um, not putting a reference under, say, sections E and G for upkeep of that certi- certificate or non-compliance of the terms of that? Because E dealing with responsible for all work, and it says pursuant to such building permit or portions thereof, do we run the risk of somebody not, do we need to tie this a little tighter referencing the requirements of that certificate?
We could perhaps create its own section, rather than having it as the, a postscript section to be, we could give it its own because it is, it, it's a kind of a different beast than the other certificates that they're having. Within that, we could A, B, C that as well, or 1, 2, 3 that as well, under that particular lettered section to say, you have to have this, and if you don't have this, you're not gonna be issued, et cetera, et cetera, and then the penalties that would be associated. It's good input. Thank you, sir.
Any other, Jay, go ahead.
Just a clarification point. In addition to making these changes as a, just a best practice of the city, and it's the right thing to do, this is also at least somewhat tied to our agreement and plan with EPA. Am I correct?
The program I've outlined is a, is a measurable, is a goal that we've included in the stormwater management plan, yes.
Thank you, sir.
We will make the changes accordingly, sir, and be bringing this to the council for your consideration at a future council meeting, assuming the council passes it immediately following that, the measures would go into effect as outlined.
I was just gonna say that I know when we went over the stormwater management plan, I, I was concerned a little bit about the contractors having to do a training and taking their time and, um, maybe they wouldn't be available on the few opportunities of the training. So I love that this is online, that it seems very short and concise, and that they're able to do it at their convenience, but within a limited timeframe, so nice work.
Well, and thank you for bringing that up because that was a, kind of an ha-ha that we hadn't thought about so that, and it actually drove us to find a, a really good training module that we've been using for, for all our staff. Lori's been developing, uh, training modules for all of the, uh, city staff regarding this, and so she's been working through, and everyone's been getting their certificate, certificates for, uh, good housekeeping and illicit discharge inspections and those type of things, so.
The only other thing that I would add as far as a comment, but it'd be totally voluntary on the contractor's part, uh, this seems like it would be a, a one-time requirement and it would, it would fit the requirement of what we're requiring the developer to do, but I would think it'd be advantageous to encourage their employees to go and take this also because many times you got a, a contractor that may not even be on the site, may not even be in the state, and, uh, the persons that are really needing to test and all of that are the ones on the site. So, you know, I would, I, if there's some way we can encourage their employees, you know, since it's not costing them anything, to take this, that way they're, they're well aware of what, you know, is required of their employers.
Any final comments or questions? Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
This moves us on to number three, sewer water rates.
Thank you, sir. Before we begin, just one quick housekeeping item. Page seven and eight in your packets, if you could substitute this pages, there's just a one-word change, but it's kind of a big word, so we, we thought we, not long, it's a big word as far as the impact that it has. And I, if anybody'd like to have the stapler to re-staple your packet, I have one right here, if you need it, just let me know. As, as most of the council is aware, in 2011, uh, the city changed its method of, of looking at water and sewer rates to go with what is commonly called the cost of service model. The simple form of that is, we, we charge in the, in the year prior to the year that the rate is going to go into effect, we examine the, the, the existing year's predictions that we had, where are, we're thinking our fund balance is going to end, the impact of the prior year's water rates as they pertained to, water and sewer rates as they pertained to getting us to a desired fund balance that we wanted, and also what, what we are hearing from our primary sources for treating sewer and for obtaining water, which is our only source, which is Kansas City, and what they are predicting or know our rates are going to do in the next year. We add to that particular formula what we are anticipating as far as normal operations costs, and we plug those all into our water and sewer rate model that we've had for several, well, since the beginning of this particular practice, and we get, uh, an estimate of what we need to be charging to garner only those revenues that will get us to the cost of service. In other words, it is not a, even though it's an enterprise fund, it is not a profit-driven enterprise. It is instead a cost-of-service-driven enterprise. With that being said, as we were going through the rate model this year, uh, we were looking at some assumptions within general operating costs. Those assumptions were that, um, the general expenses, commodity expenses with the exception of water, maintenance expenses, et cetera, were increased for 2016, fiscal year 2016 by 4%. We are anticipating a population increase of .71%. Just to digress a little bit on that, in the past, we have used certain assumptions that the model automatically plugs in based on originating assumptions that were plugged in in 2011. We have found those to be, even for 2011, a little bit aggressive. So we have drastically trimmed back based on what we are actually seeing as far as growth numbers are concerned in any given year, um, the fact that we are receiving, we're seeing absolutely no growth in Middle Big Creek. Uh, for the sake of our newer council members, uh, we actually have two sewer districts in the city. We have Little Blue Valley Sewer District, which charges us according to a formula that we are impacted with each year and we are charged by the quarter. Middle Big Creek, which is a subdivision, if you will, of Little Blue Valley Sewer District, actually charges us by the actual number of connections that we have. So we are seeing no increase in the cost to Middle Big Creek until such time as in the future, which, Cindy, do you remember which year in the future now the next increase per connection charge is called for?
Thank you.
2021, so right now, Middle Big Creek, if we don't see any new homes, we're not going to see any additional increase in charges. Uh, Little Blue Valley Sewer District is more than making up for that with some other items that they're doing for us, to us. So we're seeing the .71 actual population increase as far as number of connections are concerned, and Little Blue Valley Sewer District, cost of service, they are currently estimating a 6% increase. Kansas City Water Services has actually given us what they are saying is going to be the hard increase. They have said that for several years, that this was going to be the hard increase, and it hasn't been. We have realized a higher amount percentage increase with them. But right now, they are saying it's 3.3% for the upcoming year. Their year also does not match ours, so they actually increased their rates in April, so we have the potential to kinda see a double hit if both of those go up by more than they're predicting. Some summaries associated with these, Kansas City Water Services in the past three years has gone up a total of 21.9% of what we're paying to them for water. We are a third pump, what is called a third pump area, which means if you're right down by the river, you're getting it right off of, right out of the treatment station, and then they have pumps along the line. Third pumps are currently, and by their own admission, subsidizing people in Kansas City. We're a wholesale water customer, we subsidize the water that actual, that people who live within the limits of Kansas City are paying. Little Blue Valley Sewer District increased, um, by 8.3% based on a 6% prediction last year, so a little bit high, which means, uh, we're paying a little bit more, making a little bit less this year. Middle Big Creek Sewer District, um, obviously, as I said earlier, a 0% increase, transferred to the Enterprise Capital Maintenance Fund, remaining at the 234, 144, with estimates that that will be going up in the future based on some needs that we're seeing. All of that gets plugged into the formula. Eventually, we're going to have to get back up to the 1% of total infrastructure that we're transferring to the Enterprise Capital Maintenance Fund. So the, the formula actually reads that in a future year and realizes that right now we need to be increasing some of our fund balance. All that being said, Little Blue Valley Sewer District increases in the past three years have been 26.3%, which is eight, almost eight and a half percent higher than their predictions to us originally were. All of that being said, going back to the budget, um, when you get back to your budget books this evening, on page 171 of the budget, we were originally projecting, uh, our ending fund balance in the Enterprise Capital Maintenance Fund of 100, or I'm sorry, in the Enterprise Fund of 132,500 approximately. That's a low number. Uh, that's available fund balance after the 20% reserve and after we have transferred the 234 into the Enterprise Capital Maintenance Fund, but that's uncomfortably low. But we're gonna be watching that very, very carefully this year because obviously we had some increases that back at budget time we weren't anticipating. There is another issue in the upcoming years that I feel it is prudent for us to begin at this time, uh, funding up for litigation and the costs of litigation that we're being hit with that will be paid for out of this fund. Uh, and that the cost of that litigation can be high. All that being said, uh, plugging a number into the formula for that litigation and in consideration of the cost increases that we're seeing, in addition to the fact that we did not realize what we thought we were going to last year, staff would recommend an increase in the water, uh, from $6.15 per thousand gallons to $6.70 per thousand gallons, and in sewer, for volume method, $6.15 to $7.05 next year, and in winter averaging from $6.60 to $7.50. A reminder that, uh, a majority of our persons, a small majority now, are all on winter averaging, so they don't see the entire impact of that. Again, they only pay up to the cap that is realized in winter averaging. So, yes, they will see an increase in the unit rate, but they won't be paying for anything that goes over the cap, which we estimate right now to be about $4,000 on, or 4,000 gallons on average. So for the newer members, anything that's going onto the lawn to wash your car during the summer, if you've driven down your winter averaging, uh, during the winter averaging months, you don't pay for those amounts, for those quantities that are going, that's happening too. If the council were to take staff's recommendation relative to the increase? We ran our quick survey, I'm sorry, sorry. We ran our quick survey, and you can see where this would place us, uh, based on 6,000 gallons, Raymore would have a combined rate of $73.80, and this is at the new rate combined, and if, on the volume method, assuming the cap at 4,000 of $63.30, that would be the average bill, um, that rate would be for the not, again, the water districts don't provide sewer, so you kinda have to throw them out a little bit, but actually for some of the water districts, 2, 10, and 7, we're actually lower than them when they're only charging a water rate. But for those who are charging water and sewer, we would still be lower than everyone except for Lee Summit. Lee Summit is a second pump, and they also have Independence Water Supply that they get their water from, so their, their water is considerably cheaper than ours. Staff would entertain any questions?
Questions of staff? Jay?
Thank you, sir. Am I right in assuming, under Missouri statute, we, a utility provider, for example, KCPNL, to ask for an increase in cost of services, they have to jump through hoops, they have to ask a board for permission, generally get it granted, but I'm assuming that we come under different rules as a municipality, is that correct?
That's correct, sir. Ours are filed, but using the cost of service method, this is, this is a fee, so it's not actually a tax that would fall under the Missouri Utility Commission.
Thank you.
Other questions or statements? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Question, are there things that we could do to educate our consumers to help, help the city stabilize our rate increases, if any? Is there any way to-
The-
Put out just, hey, try this and this'll maybe help the city not raise it over time as much? Probably not.
The, our, our problem is, we are a, let me be very careful. Our problem is, we are a slave on the water side to a monopoly.
Right.
And we are a slave to, and, and that if, if you want an entertaining, just sort of cage-match view, uh, the cost-of-service presentation that Kansas City Water Services gives to the wholesale customers each year is an interesting spectacle to behold. Uh, because at the back end of it, every single year, they were, they are quite open that we are subsidizing Kansas City residents. That's a tough pill to swallow, and our rates are much higher. So, uh, again, with the majority of the costs associated with this, things that are out of our hands, I mean, we have a modest 4% increase in all of the rest of our costs that are associated with this, that we've fallen behind on, on a couple of years, but we pretty much toed the line on those, but we have absolutely no control over the largest commodity, which is water, and the largest service, contractual service, which is sewer.
Sonia?
And I know a few years ago, like when I was first on the council or right before I was elected onto the council, we did an actual study that, um, examined our other options for water, and, um, pretty, looking at the big picture of that, it was pretty unarguable that this is our only option, that the only option to go somewhere else would cost big, big, big bucks upfront, that it would take us many years to, to get back and would highly inflate our water costs for many, many years. And I don't remember the numbers, but I'm sure we could get that study again if we, if anybody wanted the information, but it would take us many years to get back to even the level we are now as far as water price goes. So we're pretty much backed into a corner as far as the water goes. So we're pretty much backed into a corner as far as the water goes.
Thank you. Not so much a question, but a comment. And I agree with you wholeheartedly. I remember it very well. I remember an option being, buying water, bringing it across state line, all the way from west, or over to here through Belton, and I think it required some cooperative agreements and stuff like that. And then there's also the comments, could we build our own sewer treatment facility? And that's, that, you know, I remember staff telling us that is probably not viable because EPA isn't giving those permits, and even if they would, that would be an extremely expensive option for us to do. The other comment I'm gonna make, you know, I, I, I work with a, at the plant, a person who does realty on the site also, and he, he, him and his family sells particularly in Cass County, Raymore, Harrisonville, and that. And I'm constantly hearing from him, from his, from his buyers and that, you know, and I'm, I'm taking this to work with me tomorrow. Because it, it, you know, as, as many times I've, I've, I've explained to my coworker, friend, you know, Raymore's water is nowhere near some of these in here, and, you know, and I don't wanna, I don't wanna name the names off here, but when you look down through these lists and you see one of our neighboring communities for water compared to Raymore proposed, Raymore 40, 20, one of our neighbors, 9609, it blows my mind how I keep hearing how much Raymore's water is, you know? And yes, it is expensive because I water my yard even in the wintertime, so I know how expensive it is, but it is a commodity. But, you know, I, I thank you for this, this information because I'm gonna use it for my own selfish purposes, but...
Yeah, it is, it, we call it the urban legend of water here, that, that we're the highest in Cass County. Mike was, was reminding me here, while we can't control, because we use the cost-of-service method, while we cannot control what we have to charge the consumers, and we'd love to see this going down every single year, the consumers have a lot of different methods that they could use to control their own pricing, that we could, we could mount a campaign, a strong campaign, to remind them that winter, again, we have a small majority that are using winter averaging. But we have a lot of lawns here in Raymore that get water during the summer, and they're paying the full price for sewer but not using it. There are some of these on this list that don't allow for volume method. We still have a senior community that the volume method works for them, so what we try to do is educate people at the window by asking them about how much do you think you use, and we allow them to change from volume to, to winter averaging at any point during the year that they'd like to change back if it doesn't work for them. So we've opened that up to them, but educating them better on driving that three months of winter averaging down. I'll actually do the confession here. I actually don't, I go to the clubhouse to shower during the winter averaging. So mine's even lower. So we encourage everybody to come to the clubhouse and do their shower. But, but things like... But, you know, you're, you're not paying a higher amount for sewer when you have winter averaging, but you're still paying for the water. Rain barrels, if you're, if you do avidly water your lawn, anything you can do to, to cut that water usage down. Water conservation would be really big, you know? There are, you hear Toby talk about the fa, Toby Tobin talk about the fact that your lawn really only needs half an inch a week to stay greened up during the summer, but you'll see sprinkler systems going every single night, every single morning. Lot of things we could do to educate the public on better water conservation. So internally, we'll make that a, a goal for ourselves, to get some sort of a program out there for us.
Are we ever in danger that Kansas City will say, Raymore, we're giving you all we want to give you, we've gotta share the water with other people, that it would impact our growth terribly if they shut us down?
We have, within the last 24 months, we have signed an agreement with Kansas City, penned an agreement with Kansas City. You may remember to, that they are committed to an additional 1 million gallons to the city, which we think will carry us easily to 2021. Mike?
Beyond that, almost 2030.
Okay, good. So we feel comfortable with that. What, you may remember, for the members who are on the council, about three or four years ago, we actually looked at Water One, because Belton is trying to pen an agreement with Water One, extremely expensive to get from Water One over to here. Our only other source would be Tri County, and as a, to go with Tri County, you have to have an agreement with Kansas City that you can seek other sources when the time comes. So our goal between now and 2030, in the next several years, because those sorts of things take years and years and years to get into place, is to make sure that our agreement with Kansas City reflects the fact that we can source out, and not on an emergency basis. But we are cognizant of all those, and they are on our long-term radars.
Mr. Comments? Well, thank you.
That's all staff has this evening, sir.
Is there any other comments? Then we'll adjourn the work session. Thank you, everybody.